All right, so I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order at 6:30. Thank you for moving the meeting to tonight and to a later time so that other things could happen here at school. Can I get someone to make a motion to accept the agenda, please?
For what?
Thank you. Sorry. Thank you. Um, thank you.
There was a request to have my report on school safety for later.
Oh, yeah, we can move that up.
Okay, and I don't know if you want to introduce Jen, she didn't want to speak.
Okay, well, let's get our agenda done. Okay, so all those in favor of the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, reading the agenda. So, since it's your first meeting, Jen, this is Jen.
Mallory.
Round, thank you. I, sorry. So, you missed the last meeting where we introduced ourselves, so we're going to go around and introduce ourselves again, just for you.
Thanks, very happy for you, Jen.
So.
I'm not, which I'm listening to.
You should introduce yourself and say something to people.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Mallory. Hi, I live in Leicestersburg, Vermont. I am very happy to be here, I have three sons, two, well, one is on the, will be a virtual academy student, one's going into a B graduating sixth grade, and I should leave, and one is in second grade.
Jeremy Gilchrist also from Leicestersburg, we've got two kids, second grade.
Jen, Devin, we met at orientation, I am a resident of Brandon, a large member, two daughters, both graduated through the SED.
Hi, Jen. Kevin, I am a resident from Brandon, and I have some regular.
I'm Bill Mathis, for your petition, in this school, to, uh, uh.
Rory Bertrand, I'm from Sudbury, I have three kids, one getting ready to become a senior, and soon to be a sophomore, and one is in the eighth grade or next year.
Derek Larson, from Brandon, I have a son who's finishing his senior year. Three other, my three year.
Hi, I'm Padrae, I'm a senior, I'm a junior.
Hi, I'm Brandon, I'm also a student, I'm freshman, so I'm in ninth grade.
Margaret, hi, we can call each other, but I'm from Brandon, I'm a junior, I have two kids.
Brett Mullin, Pittsburgh, two kids, first and second grade.
I have two grandsons who are juniors.
So, thank you for joining our board, and if you have questions, just ask. All right, so, in the essence of time, one of our board members needs to leave early tonight, and the time of the topic is school safety, so I'm going to move it to you.
Okay, I actually don't enjoy this conversation, like many of you, and most of our students and staff and parents are still struggling with this issue in Valley, Texas, last week, where they did just about everything, I think it appears, from school safety perspectives, the school did. But we do a variety of things around school safety in this district. We do have locked doors, we actually, prior to last week, had talked to our elementary schools, during COVID, we needed to loosen up the use of the outside doors to classrooms. Because of social distancing, we actually had classes being dismissed from classrooms directly outside and coming in directly from outside. So, actually, about a month and a half ago, we asked principals to phase out of that and go back to a single door entrance, which has caused a few, freaking lot, changes, required to happen at some of the schools, but we have a single entrance into every school, entrances are kept locked at all times, which does require staff to be on top of that. We have a key card access system towards schools so that we can get into, depending on your access in the district, we can get into whatever building we get into, but that allows board staff who are outside, we can get into the door while the door remains locked as well, and it also allows us to turn off the badge on a moment's notice if there is an employee who is dismissed, which is a much improved, is a much improved process to, when we had keys, and keys were everywhere, we didn't really know where all the keys were. We have significantly beefed up our partnerships with counseling services of Edison County and Rutland Health over the past few years, to have case managers and clinical workers in the schools able to provide counseling services to students. We also have a partnership with Invest EAP, an employee assistance program for all of our staff, which is a confidential free service for all employees of the district and their families. We have put in, we have researched and trained in a threat assessment protocol that our, each school has a team who are, who are trained in this protocol, and they can work across schools, so that if there is a threat that comes forward, or somebody hears something, we can go through, instead of the old fashioned gut check, I think this is okay, or I think this isn't, we actually have a research-based protocol we go through to help determine the level of risk, and to help determine the needs of the, of the student who, who might have made a threat. We are part of the Vermont Safe Tip Line, where, which is a 24-hour phone number, or text number, or online recording system, that feeds into a single spot in the state, and then I, a superintendent, will receive the call, if there is anything in my region that might affect us. So, if somebody is not comfortable coming forward directly to the school, they can go to that tip line at any point. Excuse me, our Let's Talk, our online communication system also directs emails to, people don't have to know who they're asking for when they're emailing the district, they can look up, for example, Otter Valley, and they can log into principal, and they could just say Otter Valley High School, and they'll go directly to the principal, so they don't have to know Jereen's name, or try to remember my name, or any of that, they can just go right to the area that they want to go to, and that email goes directly to the top of the mailing box. That is, it's an interactive system. And then we have been, for several years, training our staff in the Run, Hide, Fight approach to an intruder alert, intruder threat. Run, Hide, Fight is an options-based approach that starts with teaching students lockdowns, evacuations, and to think through their options if there were an intruder threat. I'm really sad to say that this training has actually borne throughout the community, they, you know, nearby mall, I went a couple of years ago, and it was kids in the mall who told the adults about to do. It's kind of like fighter alarms, it's a life skill now. We do an age-appropriate training for students, starting in kindergarten, and, you know, clearly with age-appropriate language, our guidance counselors are part of that training session, so that we're making sure that kids are supported as they're learning at, as kids get older, it's, it's a little bit more realistic, but it's crucially important, and has been proven in the safety of others, if there is an intruder threat. I'm not sure if I left anything out, but are there questions, a lot of this, you read in my letter that went out last week, questions?
Do you have, do you do Asher exercises, active shooter?
We do not do active shooter exercises.
Have you worked with Brandon Police Department?
Yes, 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 we have. And in fact, we did a tabletop scenario with Brandon Police, Brandon Fire Department, actually, all of our police departments, fire departments, and emergency management systems pre-COVID, and all of my administrators. And we have allowed Brandon Police into particularly Otter Valley, to do an off-hours training, shooter training. I personally choose not to put our students through something like that realistic. We have had the nerve gun practice.
Yeah, I meant for, yeah.
We have had that for administrators, but I won't do that, this is too traumatic. But we do, and now, actually, with the new police chief of Brandon, Kristin is setting up, Kristin and the new high school principal are setting up the meeting in July, and once has spent some time this summer, making sure that he's familiar with Chief Repel, we had really good relationships, and he had hard access to the schools, et cetera, and was able to, you know, move into place quickly if he needed to. It's not clear to me if the new chief even realizes he has the access to, that appointment is underway already.
Jen?
I don't know if you remember, there was like a potential gun incident at Lester School several years ago, 2017, 18. So, I made a lot of contact with a bunch of people, I can say our school did completely appropriate action, the police response, the best way I could describe it, the nicest light that can shine on it, it's comparable. And so, since then, has there been coordination outside of Brandon Police, but law enforcement that are involved with the non-Brandon parts of the district?
Yes. So, what Jeremy is referring to is, some of our schools don't have a police department, they have, they turn to the state police, and when you call the state police barracks, you don't know where in the state they're going to get. And Lester School was not in the 911 system correctly, so they didn't report to the correct school. So, we did, we, we also do a debrief after every incident that happens, for example, the incident with the bus accident, the incident with the smoke in the building, or any incident that happens in the district, doesn't have to be shooter alerts. But in that particular case, we then called the Perry Barracks, and said, can you come in and meet with us, walk through our school, this department, and they have, they have done some. In addition, we require, we have an emergency operations plan, that's generated from Rutland County Supervise Reunion, but has to have building-based information in it, and as part of that plan, there has to be an annual connection with your evacuation sites, an annual connection with your law enforcement responders, and then contact information, contact numbers, and that, I just actually, Kristin and Melvin and I sat down yesterday, just went through all those plans, so that she understands the system that's in place, and we ask the principals update that every September 1st of each year. So, we spend the summer kind of updating that information, change of staff, change of police staff, change of, you know, whatever is in place. So, that's what we did after that particular incident. I will also say that the remote year of COVID, and even last year of COVID, was not, for the remote year, we didn't do that. And as I'm looking through the plans now, I can see that nearly all of the schools updated them for '21, '22, there's one school that didn't, which is probably the most surprising to me, because usually it's a school that's ahead of everything, so maybe they just didn't do it. So, I followed up on that. But everybody did update it for '21, '22, and it will be updated.
How confident are you in state better law enforcement response? So, tell everybody, like, what I found out when I looked into this, the Brandon Police didn't show up because it wasn't their jurisdiction, there was, no one knows, there was like, potentially someone walking around on Route 7, the Lester School with a gun, so it wasn't in, in the actual school property.
Just a dog.
Yeah, there's all kinds of weird stories around it. But when the police were alerted, no one showed up. Eventually, the, they changed over the 911 call center that year, so the state police didn't know where the school was, they sent someone to Asher D, I think. The state trooper finally showed up, it was like an hour and a half later, and when I asked the, I think the tenant in charge at the Barracks in New Haven, the responding officer didn't come immediately because they were with an abandoned car on like, one of the state highways around here, which seemed weird to me, like, that was a higher priority than getting to a school where there was a potential gun incident. I think right now, it's become really important again, to make sure something like that doesn't happen. So, from what I understand, Brandon Police didn't show up because of concern jurisdiction issues, the state police didn't show up because they didn't know where the school was, and because the one officer who responded was sitting with an abandoned car. Has anything happened where, so from what I understand, the other thing that I was told was that the Brandon Police actually can show up to the surrounding schools outside of their jurisdiction for school violence, potential gun shooting, related incidents. Has anything happened where now someone needed to show up right away to a school, regardless of jurisdiction, or?
So, I didn't hear the part about the gun, about the part, the abandoned car, that wasn't shared with me.
It was shocking.
Yeah, but I did hear that the 911 address was wrong, and needed to be corrected in the system, and they could, they didn't know the school house was open. And so, it did delay them by an hour, Jeremy's point, the school acted very quickly, got all the kids inside, delayed the buses, they didn't, so they knew that it was safe outside, which is very well. So, the kids were safe, but, you know, we didn't know what the threat was at the time that it happened. Correct?
Maybe just kind of education for folks that may not know, like, so every extension has to have a 911 address associated with it? I assume that's done by a vendor for us, right?
We've done it in all of our schools.
Right.
Yeah, they have the wrong address done.
Okay.
That's been fixed.
Okay, and that should be audited every year, hasn't it, right?
Right, we have to do that for, it's called E-Rate.
Yeah, so like, in this school, probably based off of zones, right? So, each, each calling part of the zones, they would know which part of the building the call is coming from to, right?
Right, yeah. So, but to answer your question, Jeremy, I, I don't think I know right now, I recall that, as it was a few years ago, I recall that, like I said, that, you know, the Barracks came out, and Martha's going, that the principal, and said, can't be the first responder, now they do where the school is. I don't recall the conversation for any police department, but I can go back which I can.
Yeah, I'm just concerned that fixing the easy logistical issue of like, the wreck address, that's taken care of, that's not a big deal, I'm more concerned about appropriate coordination, and that outside of the red tape, someone hears, oh, there's someone with a gun at a school, let's get some law enforcement there immediately.
And part of your question is, was to me, do you feel confident that that's resolved? I do not feel, I do not feel confident in the areas, any of our school areas, that our state police, that we're there to resolve.
That's why I brought up Asher, and Asher, it's a field class exercise that brings in all of your NMS, all of your fire, everybody in the area who sits down together, and they talk about their roles, and who could do what, in an event.
So, we did do that, and the state police was present for time. My concern is that staff change, so the person sitting at the table was perfectly clear.
It is, but the person participating in the training talks that through, I don't know how that's carrying that.
So, again, you know, Brandon Chief of Police is now, the entire police force is now different from when we did that training three years ago.
So, there should be a procedure that we call.
Yeah, there should, yeah, written out, right. And that's what our emergency ops plan has as well, and I'm making note that that would be a good thing, because Kristin is logged on, so I'm making note that that would be a good thing to do.
To have another Asher.
To have another, yeah.
It seems to me you should, supervising should also be contacting the chair's department, and the police department.
But we aren't.
It seems that we were a day, we're all part of that.
They were.
Bosses.
Yeah, they were when we did it last time, it wasn't just Brandon. Jen, what's your question?
I'd love to prolong the conversation, I was looking through past agendas and past presentations, and I saw your note of increased confirmation review here, and I was wondering where the status was with our universal review of data systems, and maybe what, if there could be a presentation on the data systems that are in place from the different schools, so we can see if those are what could be here, and what topics we're looking at from this point.
Sure, not this year, of course, but when you do your retreat in August, it's a good time to plan it into the year, and we can talk about that. And that particular topic, Otter Valley, I'm going to touch upon in a minute.
I'd just like to suggest some discretion, and also, if you see a reason, some ideas about how we can talk about.
Jen, do you have long plans, something that you could, possibly currently continue?
You mentioned that, you know, how, so, is that an on-call basis, are the employees that work with people?
So, we identify, we identify kids who are at high risk for mental health support, or have new high needs, good mental health supports, and in that case, we contract with the Rutland Mental Health System, or Rutland County Schools, and CSAC, or at, we have two Edison County Schools, and bring them right into the, on top of that, we do have hot access in the emergency, if we need to bring in mental health providers. In addition, the regional superintendents will provide support to each other, for example, Perry Barracks recently, this year had a suicide, and so, all of us reach out and offer our answers to help them as well.
Further questions?
I don't, last year, I remember at Otter Valley, there was a conference on Butterfield, but was his job more related to, was it in correlation with protecting the school, or just being a resource for school, so why is it, why is it, why was he there last year and not me?
Very good question, Brandon, I didn't even think of it. So, the history of the school resource officer, which was his job, dates back early to the Columbine shootings, when all, when there was grant money for schools to be the school resource officer, and Otter Valley jumped on that bandwagon, and had, what was it, Officer Vandy? Yes, for many, many years. And when she retired, we actually went without for about a year, because the Brandon Police Department was having difficulty finding police officers. This is a partnership with the police department, and we pay for the school resource officer's time here, but the police department hires and trains and, I don't know, the police department. Then Officer Butterfield was hired, and came here, and left because the Brandon Police Department, again, was lacking staff and needed to pull them out. They attempted to fill the position for the next year and a half unsuccessfully, because they were really having difficulty finding staffing, and ultimately, I believe in last year's budget, that SRO funding shifted to more mental health free services, so it doesn't actually exist in the budget anymore, it's, it shifted, primarily because there was no staff to be found, and we had more mental health services needs, and so it shifted out. And it is a question to come up, but I, in my mind, it's all tied together, really, with your question, Jen, that over the last three years, our, our schools are in different places with the positive behavior support system, and Otter Valley had been holding strong, but over the last three years, through COVID, they've, they've definitely lost its, it's not a heaven to gain anymore. And this year, we have had some significant confrontation of behaviors happening in school, and an increase in suspensions as a result, combined with the fact that we have had extreme shortages in staff, both in teachers, parent educators, administrators, Otter Valley has been down, administrator for half the year. And with the shortages of substitutes, our administrators are subbing, and so, the system has not been as robust as it has been in the past. One, in fact, that led to, our, just, I might notice to the board today, of changing the schedule for the last week of school, because COVID is still running rampant through the schools, we have staff, we have a significant number of staff out sick, we have, this is also the time of year, where many staff end up taking personal days because of their own children's activities, whether, whether it's graduation, or an elementary child who wants mom to go on the last field trip before they get too old to have mom go with them, or yeah. But there are just a number of reasons why staff need to be out, and looking at the numbers of staff in Otter Valley over the next eight days, it is not, I did not feel it was safer sustained to have a full student body, and knowing that the, the support system was not as strong as it has been in the past. That said, as we look towards the new year, one of the first things that the new principal and the new assistant principal, and Christine, the other associate principal, Kristin, Frank Bolivina, who's going to be helping with social emotional learning, the dean of students, and the planning department, are all going to be reporting this summer to revamp the positive behavior system here, and roll it out freshly in the fall, and particularly look discussing the idea of bringing in incoming seventh graders and incoming ninth graders, separate from the rest of the school, at the start of the school year, so that they get that intensive, what does it mean to be at Otter Valley, what does it mean to be a high school student type opportunity, with that whole school being in place, so we're making significant changes for the start of next school, and if we can, if we can do that, that's a good thing. Phil?
How can that, do the people turn over in these slots, there was something, you know, that, I don't know, one of the, 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 I'm also a part of the school system.
You mean like, who's Rutland Mental Health focused? Yeah, they also are having trouble filling some of those slots, so, there's also a shortage in, we don't have a full complement, we're just not.
You guys, this is, you should, you should.
Correct. It's very interesting.
Yeah, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a, how do we monitor potential threats? Do we do that, do we, do we have a relationship with the FBI, or some, no, we don't?
Actually, I just talked to a reporter today, we, one, one year, we have a relationship with Social Center, which is a company that monitors specifically social media threats, it was a very expensive budget item, and we, we ended up dropping it after a year. So, we, we did, our, our SIPA software, child protection app software, does have capability to some extent to monitor what they see in the system, that's not, our email system, which has helped a bit, but I think some of the, social media, we do not have an active surveillance system in social media. And it's about a 15 to 20 minutes.
Is there, hey, overall sky, chief for safety in this school? You described quite good, but the message to be, you know, like, I think, before, everything that we're looking for, nothing, bringing, like, salary off to that, or hardly, like, getting into schools at all, or is it long-term or like that?
Well, yes, and no. So, we are, we are keeping current with all of the latest practices, working with Rob Ederson, the state safety liaison, who comes in and trains administrators. Another thing I need to mention is, like, all of the administrators have been through the incident command system training, with the Department of, what's it, Homeland Security, as well as communication training, Department of Security, and I ask the administrators to include that training every single fall, and in fact, is what was used when COVID broke out, because it became an, and I became an incident training officer. So, we're keeping current with, with everything that's there. There are, we have identified a few more things, we also access, this bit has safety grants, and that's what got us our badges systems, it also got us sirens on the top of schools, so that if there's classes out in the fields, they can be notified as well if, if there's an emergency in the school. In some of the cases, Otter Valley included, it got some window screening put up. Otter Valley, we revamped the front of the school specifically for safety, with safety in mind, because you used to just walk right into the lobby, even if the door was locked, once it was unlocked, you walked right into the lobby, you had access to the whole school. Now, you have to go through the office, and there are two different barriers to getting into the office. So, what we do is, each year, we sit down So what we do is each year, we sit down as an admin team, we talk with, we also have safety audits done like this where they come out about every two years and walk our buildings and help identify where there might be some weaknesses in our schools. And we have safety audit reports that we review and those get built into our facilities reports, anything we need to do there. But then we also identify as an administrator team if there are, if there is new, our new strategies that we need to improve. So in other words, we're constantly involved. It's not something we're striving to, it's something we're constantly trying to improve. One, one area that I would like to see happen, we have more cameras in the schools than we remember. It's not a favorite of this at the time that started, but it, it is particularly helpful with the locked doors to be able to have a camera at the door to be able to do this. But one area that I think in particular, Otter Valley still needs to happen is that their, the key card system should be on every classroom door as well. Because if you are a teacher in hallway and there's an intruder alert, you don't have a key in the classroom that's right next to you, if they're not all keyed and saying, then you can't get in and the teacher's totally not at the door. Whereas if you had the key card, then you could get into there. And that's pretty possible. And that's on our wish list to do. Like I said, we access this, Bizbit safety grants every year to chip away on these things that are on this.
So the Bizbit safety grants only allocated for, what do you draw out there that can maybe use for personnel?
Only technology, they're one-time grants. So if you use a one-time grant for personnel, either you need to be ready to let them go at the end of the year or, so it's not just technology, but materials, blocks, the sirens, the cameras, things like that. And then we, we, like I said, we debrief things. We had an incident at Barstow, I think, two years ago, where we had an odor in the school that we didn't know what it was. And so we ended up evacuating the entire school to Lothrum. We got the buses, our PD teacher up there is a bus rider for us. And so he drove, he gets odor to Lothrum and we wore Lothrum and Lothrum prepared their town hall to take in an entire school of kids. We activated the new communication system. So we do some real life practicing and so far, thank goodness, that real life practicing has not been in significant situations. The most significant was probably the bus incident earlier this year where we had some kids were told to wait until the morning to jump in the school. And we debriefed that. Is that worth it?
All right, we'll move on. Communications with parents, citizens and staff. I don't think anyone is here to talk to us. And I have not had a board that's talked before. Okay, so we're going to move on. Consent agenda. Can I get someone to make a motion please? Thank you, Jen. All of those in favor of the consent agenda, signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Okay, consent agenda is passed. Thank you for that. Okay, so now onto board monitoring reports on the second page. 4.5 Board Member's Code of Conduct, it was continued from our meeting from last. Ready to present?
I haven't really had anything to add to my work. I sent in some other comments. I don't know if we have other comments. I know we've got to send in.
Everything was set up by Melinda, I think, to be.
Yeah. But the, the essence of, of what my contribution was, was to look at this notion of the policy that we have called Board Member's Code of Conduct. It's largely, it largely talks about conflict of interest. And embedded in that are some statements about code of conduct. So one of the things that Kevin and I discovered was this discrepancy of trying to cover both those areas under one policy. So we separated, we looked at separating out comments about what the policy wording, it was most appropriate to one or the other, on the dimensions for specific to Board Member's Code of Conduct. So it was a sort of structural activity to make suggestions that would make it a lot clearer about the code of conduct issues versus the conflict of interest. And that's what was in your board packet update today is this one. So that being said, to establish a separate, a separate policy language piece called conflict of interest, and we have one, it's called code of conduct. It's got all of this, many things that involve code of conduct and conflict of interest related. So I guess process wise, we'd have to look at crafting a new policy that would be called conflict of interest and then revise the existing 4.5 code of conduct. That's my thought. I mean, how would it be to feel about how to proceed on that? But it'll be a lot clearer if we do that.
So we could add that to our retreat as whether or not people want to do that, then we would actually probably work on that during whatever our second meeting is. Is that okay?
Oh yeah, I think that's acceptable I think.
All right. So based on what you do have, does anyone want to make the motion to accept the code of conduct as prepared by Kevin and Derek?
I personally would make the motion to table because I guess we see this two hours of, you know, we're going to say no as well.
Okay. How does everyone else feel about that? I'm just asking for consensus. Right, yes. We talked about that during the hour. So if we postpone all three of these, then I think we postpone them to the June 15th meeting because otherwise we're not going to meet again until our retreat. And I don't see that that makes any sense whatsoever. So if everyone is in agreement, we can table all three of these until next meeting and you'll all have a chance to vote. Is that okay?
What would we be approved? Because Heather, I mean, I see there's like discussion of board policies, but are there proposed, there's proposed changes that were being asked to?
No, changes, changes would not be approved.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, what's, other than the table motion, what would be with that?
Well, there was two of them, I believe, and one of them they worked on together. So I didn't know if we would be approving that one, the one that Kevin or Donna.
Oh, just the, just the.
Just the report.
We, we didn't really work on reports together.
Oh, you did not.
Okay, so it would be just to approve the report?
I think we should just wait, yeah. Why don't we just wait?
I don't want to understand.
Yeah. Okay. So if everyone is in agreement, we'll move all three of those to the 15th and that way you'll have a chance to vote. Okay? Okay, in that regard, we have the final two board monitoring reports. One is 4.1 and 4.7 that we also need to have done before our retreat, which means that a couple of people would have to want to take one of those two monitoring reports, which was in your packet, and report out on it. And I would like them for the next meeting only because otherwise we're not going to be able to finalize all of these before. Okay, so would you want a governance investment or governance style? So let's put someone with you that has actually worked with policy governance, a little bit more than just you. Okay, Dana Bartlett, thank you for that. All right, so we need someone to do governance investment. Derek, why don't you and I do that one, if you're all right with that?
I'd be delighted.
I'd do it. Okay, so please try and meet so that we can have these before the board packet, which would be the Friday before the 15th, so that's the nut 10. So these need to be done before next meeting.
Yay.
And to give.
You are going to Great Escape tomorrow.
To give Melinda her.
I am.
To give.
You are?
To give Melinda her credit due. She really needs them by Thursday if the boards to get them in a timely manner.
Where's he compare this on the, on the merry-go-round?
Okay.
Okay.
What grade is Pop? Sixth grade.
Which grade is going to?
Oh, yes. It's third one, Otter Valley eighth grade.
Probably now.
Which is my other son. So we're just all telling him.
All right, so those have been assigned, yes.
I just have a question because definitely the motion, you know, exciting to get.
I said we would do it by consensus. If you're a political, yeah, then there we go. So there, there was wrong, it's by consensus.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Governance process, estimated year-end financial review and possible action. So this is where Jean's going to tell us how much money we saved in our budget this year to carry forward. And normally what happens is we take that amount and we put a portion of that into our facility fund and a portion of that into our after-school facilities we use at a later date.
I can do that. I did also text Brenda to jump on. He has more complicated questions if we delegate to her. Sure. But we have a projected surplus, the document is in your packet, a projected surplus of $194,000. The reason that's projected is because that's what our year-end invoices, et cetera, appear to leave us at, but it's never a final unbalance until the audit is completed. The auditor's coming July and you usually get the audit in for it in December. So you're acting on a projected surplus of $194,000. That's a conservative estimate as well. Perfect timing. We are recommending, welcome Brenda, we are recommending that you consider rolling forward $240,000, which is half the current carried over balance. Actually, Brenda, that's a perfect time to turn it over to you to talk about our recommendation.
Aye.
Aye, we can't see you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah. Can you tell us what that is titled in the, in the documents?
It's, it's after all the reports, it's, it's Otter Valley, you define the new school district or report, yeah. General fun side summary.
There you are, Brenda, we see you now. Yes. So I'm not sure where you're at, so I don't know.
We just started. I, I just explained what a projected surplus is, that it's $194,000 and that's a conservative estimate since we aren't yet at June 30th, nor have we been audited. And you came on just as I was about to talk about the recommendation to roll forward $240,000, but even I didn't quite understand the text, so your timing is perfect.
Okay. So you may or may not bring them or actually should be turned in. So when COVID hit in 2020, we had a passive surplus and we decided to split it over the next three years, '21, '22, and '23. So then that went to next year's budget cycle. So when we build the budget next year, it will be for 2024 and we will be starting $460,000 short. So I would recommend that we drop down from the $460,000 by putting up to half of that or $230,000 of any surplus into, to do nothing with it basically. Because by doing nothing with it, it will roll forward to reduce and come through a sub-unbalanced surplus in 2024. And then if we go over that, so $230,001, then I recommend moving to $240,000 for a couple of reasons. The biggest reason being that now we're going to have some facilities we need, so we have some facility conversations coming up in regards to what to do with the facilities that we own and are stretched to and beyond capacity. So I think having resources in the facility fund is the best place to put that. Our other option would be to put that into the actual fund, which is a great place to put that. But with COVID, with the COVID ester monies, we've been able to nicely fund and support those who are in crisis. So I think that will continue for another year, which is why I recommend any surplus of $230,000 be put into the facility fund. Any surplus under $230,000 to remain and do nothing with it. So we'll roll forward into.
So Brenda, I'm going to ask, you said we have $194,000 estimated surplus, but you're, we are recommending that up to $230,000 surplus be rolled forward. So if the surplus is less, so if we phrase it that way, then any surplus up to $230,000 would be rolled forward to offset the cliff at the end of the year. Is that correct?
That's correct. And the $194,000 is still a conservative number, so we can't promise you that it will be $240,000 or $250,000. I do think it will be over $194,000. We closed POs just, yes, yesterday, till June 1st, so haven't had a chance to take another peek and see where we're at. So the $194,000 is still a conservative number.
Derek?
Has there been a conversation about why there's a deficit? The $194,000?
So it's not that there's a deficit moving forward, it's that the board in the past has designated funds to carry forward over the last three years and that is not going to happen in the next year that we're budgeting for.
And when you carry forward funds, so the board said we're going to carry forward funds, just as I said with the grant, it's a one-time shot of money, which means the next year, the budget has gone up by that $460,000? But now you're going to have to raise taxes to cover that $460,000. So it helped lower taxes for one year and creates a gap and so taxes jump again. So what Brenda is recommending is that we're going to stagger in out of that forward motion so that it's not as big a sticker shock and perhaps with future surpluses, you'll be able to buy it back in excess and not affect the taxpayers much. Question?
So if you were to shrink it by my purpose right now, are you able to, I'm hearing from the doctor.
Correct. Are you able to hear it, Brenda? So even though.
I cannot.
So I think I have the question right. We can only roll over for one year. If, if you roll it over, if you do nothing with it, roll it forward, those are the same concepts, then it becomes part of next year's budget, which means that's that much less money we have to ask for the taxpayers for that itself. With the facilities fund, which is a voter-designated fund for capital improvements, that fund can sit, that's what you wrote on this one last week, that fund can sit until that's at year, the voters have allowed you to put that fund aside.
Let you go on.
Indefinitely. Indefinitely.
In an opportunity.
I'd like to make a motion to delay this discussion for a week as well, and to bring in our shop teacher and listen to the Muslimu teacher to talk about their budgetary needs in the coming year. Is there a second?
Is that the table that I was just saying?
Yeah, table, please.
But is there a few questions? They're asking, you know, whether they're asking us to, who, how, giving the funds...
No, I'm asking for a discussion.
And I assume in two weeks?
Two weeks, yeah, next meeting.
I'm adhering to a second.
I'll second it for discussion, you know, a second. Thanks. So my reasoning is, last week, we had a misunderstanding, I think, and one's fairly easy, easily understandable for new board members. The question was asked whether I discussed the budgetary needs that I suggested last time with the teachers. That's not allowable under policy governance, because we have to look through channels to do that. So I could not have approached a teacher directly to have that discussion. And the response to that from a couple of members of the board, at least I felt, was that I hadn't done sufficient homework, that we needed more knowledge and so forth and so on. And if I recall correctly, it was Natalie, so it might be a good idea to bring these people in. So that's what I'd like to do. The clock's running out for the school year, which means that the needs for next fall are going to be left untouched unless we look at them more closely. I think bringing those teachers in, in board setting, to discuss their urgent needs, is a necessary thing to do, you know, justice delayed is justice denied. And in this case, we have a further impediment in that Mr. Carpack's going to begin his Rowland Fellowship in the fall, which is a potential source of further delay, I don't think that is the case right now. So to be able to have that discussion in front of the board, and for us to consider the greater depth of knowledge and what our students need, and I think we established last week that those needs are severe, that's why I would come to delay this to get that discussion on the table next week. Thank you.
Brenda?
Thanks, I just want to clarify what the discussion might be and what it is allowed and not to be. So we don't have the authority to take money from this year and use it in next year's operating budget. We don't have that authority, only the voters have that authority when they establish a reserve fund. So I'm not, I just wanted to, I'm not sure what we're thinking about.
So the only options, then, to reiterate that, Brenda, are to put it in the Facilities Reserve Fund, the After-School Reserve Fund, or to roll it forward, but it can't be used in the operating budget that's used to offset the taxes raised. Those are the only options for this $194,000.
So if you roll forward, it brings up the tax rate for next year, the budget next year. If you put it in the Facilities Fund, it's going to be used for facilities which would be a shock.
That could not be, so then that would be a different, you would revisit your Facilities Fund.
So it's a time constraint around?
There's not a time constraint to revisit the Facilities Fund, you can do that at any point you need to.
So the money in the Facilities Fund itself, though, has no time constraints?
Correct, that's correct.
Is there, if we need it for an emergency, or when we talk about facility needs for someone?
So the other option is to put a portion of it towards next year's budget, and a proportion into the facilities, a proportion into after-school, or a proportion into the facilities, a proportion into after-school, or a portion towards...
Right, and our recommendation is to do up to $230,000 roll over to help offset the cliff of the taxes from the decisions already made. And anything over $230,000 goes to the Facilities Fund. And you can have, you can warrant, the board as a whole, to choose to put the Facilities Fund discussion back on.
And we're talking about $194,000, or am I going to use high as $130,000? So what you're saying is anything over $130,000, or $230,000, sorry, $230,000 would be used to...
Right, that's the recommendation. And you notice the motion on the agenda, we don't talk real numbers there, and we ask for you to consider a percentage of the year-end surplus, because this is an estimate. So you could word that motion to put up to $230,000 or up to what number you choose in to roll over and rest into the Facilities Fund. So you can word that motion, not actual numbers.
What about moving funds between the two different, like, if we put it in the Facilities Fund, and that's something that changed in after-school, we can't do that?
What's in there, is there? And that's what it has to be used for, because that's what the voters are going to want for.
So there is a motion on the table to have a discussion next week, to bring, or a week after, yeah, next week, to bring Mr. Carpack in, Mr. Hart in. Yeah?
I'm just concerned, but I mean, so it's a, 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 a question, a question, I mean, actually, you know, to the government, we get all part of it. Answer question, five minutes, we will question, maybe, uh, maybe you think that, I'm sure you're, uh, that, that's something you need to have, and, 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 and to have, 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 to have.
I think there's a few things to think about, Bill, actually, if you want to go down that road. Number one is that Kevin has already indicated that Mr. Carpack is going to be gone for part of the year next year with his Rowland Fund, or Rowland Foundation grants, and therefore will not be here. And so I don't know why all of a sudden there's this big push to get him $100,000, whatever, $1,000 worth of equipment.
He will be here for, this calendar's going to be...
I'm not done, thank you. So I also am concerned that this is going to look bad to every other single department in our school system, going, why is the board all of a sudden worried about the Muslimu and, and the tech ed program? Why aren't they worried about social studies? We need this, and why haven't they talked about that? I, as a board member, am not aware if there are any other potential needs of any other sections of our schools, whether it's elementary or high school. And therefore, I'm very, very guarded to do this. I actually think this is a very bad move, and the fact that you're trying to do this again for the third time in so many meetings? Right. So anyway, that's my say, I don't think it's a good idea. I think that the administration has talked to all of the teachers, all of the things have had to go through channels. They've had to go through their principal, who then go to the facilities manager, who then goes to Brenda, and they determine what we need for the next school year, or what we can do during the summer. I think that we need to listen to them in this instance. And we have also appropriated $100,000, $1,000 in years two and three for Mr. Carpack's program. And if Mr. Hart really needs something, then he needs to bring it forward to Jim or to the new principal, who should bring it through proper channels. That is my two seconds.
Let me ask, so as you know this, when do you find out about what the, what's here to be, is to, down, discussing with the, the principal, the, 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 the policy, and, and, and...
Right, they bring it to, they bring it forward to their principal, they say, these are our needs, this is what we would like to use Facilities Funds for, and then based on discussions with Brenda and the Facilities Manager, who next year will be Richard Yu, who is also our bus coordinator, they will bring those ideas to the board, and that's why at last meeting, you saw that list. The list of what they wanted to do for summer, which was the $440,000, and then they also brought forward the things that they expected to do in the following year.
So the immediate monitor, what superintendent, who has, who has required, is, they bring that to the board, to say, you, 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 you know, the best time for you guys to have a policy, you're just trusting the captain, like, who is, who is, who is, who is, who is, who is, who is...
Well, I think, I mean, at some point, doesn't there anything we trust there somewhere?
For sure.
But, but that, that would be my...
I understand the process, because she said, as a board member, you don't know what, whatever...
I don't, right.
Other schools might need, or other, um, or, like, history partners, or what needs, and that's things I wouldn't know either, because I don't...
Well, we do leave that stuff to the superintendent to run ship, so it's very pushing. Okay, so I...
I'll oppose that, because I have...
Jeanne, it's your question, you're, you're, sure.
Part of your question, definitely, I heard, is what's the budgeting process, not just what's the Facility Fund process? So because, because the department, the department, that's covering the budgeting process. So the budgeting process starts approximately in October for the following school year, as we, two of our staffing, we're mostly hired, now we know what our current staffing is, and Brenda and the superintendent sit down, and each principal sit down, and they look at their staffing for their school, and say, this is what exists, this is what we know, this is what our staffing actually costs compared to what we thought it was going to cost to learn how to budget and work. So we start with a true that budget. And then the board has a discussion, which will be in late October, early November, and gives the superintendent some guidance, such as, tell us what you want, or bring in a 2% budget, or whatever guidance the board feels they need to make at that time. Then the superintendent, the business manager, and the principals have school-by-school meetings to talk about what in that school is, is the principal and the teachers, the principal is the conduit to the teachers, the superintendent is the conduit to the principal. So the teachers, the principal will have already consulted with their department chairs or their teachers, and they bring to that meeting with Brenda and the superintendent a list of what they, what the needs are. Those needs could be staffing needs, they could be materials needs. The superintendent and the principals then, and the business manager then pull together a presentation for the board, and say, this is what we're recommending, and this is what, this is, if we need to live within the limitations you set, it means that we're going to need to cut $500,000 out of what we recommend is needed, and so, but we want you to have a full picture. That usually takes place in December. And that would be the, so that would be the timeframe, whether it's the art teacher who come forward and say, you know, I think it's 45 years old, we need one, or the social studies department, well, a few years ago, to find you that, for example. So that's when that stuff would come forward. And then between December and January, we get information from the state that we don't, we don't have in December, that tells you how much it's actually going to cost. So that information, the common mobile appraisal, the yield that the state is going to pay, all of that, our average day of membership, what generates the tax rate, all of that information comes in during the latter part of December. And the board meets again once or twice in January to refine the budget. But the information you're asking about is coming through multiple meetings with the superintendent, the business manager, the principals, who have already talked to the teachers, and then forward to board. And we usually bring forward information that goes beyond what you told us we could do, because we want to get it out of the board.
And, sure, motion to read the question, there's one, you, 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 you are going to...
Okay, so are you saying you move the question?
I can move the question.
All right, so all of those in favor of moving the questions? That's all right. Thank you. All of those in favor of moving the questions, if you'd like to say a aye? Can you raise your hands for me, please? Yeah. Okay, thank you, all those both. Okay, so the question has been moved.
Just to clarify, that was the, the motion on the table, it was being, the question people got, was to be moved on, table in this until next meeting.
And?
And that was just... Do we have to move those tied?
So that's the motion. So we're ready to vote, then? Okay, so all of those in favor of bringing, well, can you read the motion, please? Sorry.
Motion by Kevin Thornton, and seconded by Kevin Fuller, to delay the discussion and bring the shop teacher, the new teacher, to the board to talk about the budgetary needs for the teacher.
All of those, all of those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Please raise your hands. All of those opposed?
Looks like the ayes have it.
Do I have a very full, to, 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 to...
Yep.
Naming of, we're going to move on to the naming of facilities?
Right, it's in my superintendent's report. As I said, last meeting, and you asked to postpone this meeting, I changed my recommendation actually. Looking at the, when a situation comes up, the first thing I'm supposed to is look at the policies and say, where do they fit? It doesn't fit. So in this case, it was the naming of a program, it could be the naming of a school, it could be the naming of a building or a field, it doesn't, I didn't really see where I was addressed. So I recommend adding to the executive limitations, something to address this, and my recommendation is totally up for your discussion or acceptance or change or whatever, it's up to the recommendation that you started with, about how would you like to address the naming of programs or buildings, et cetera.
Were you inspired by the recent legislation?
You know, I wasn't. You mean the mask legislation? I wasn't, I was, I was inspired by the, although that's a good question, because also the flags, not really, not available. But I was inspired by the fact that we had a teacher, arbitrarily, we got going through any process, whatsoever, objects, we, 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 after, after, an administrator, an existing administrator, and I have no problem with the choice of the name, but I might, I mean, somebody might, there was the process to it.
So you want to bring that back to our retreat and talk about what executive limitation that should go to?
I did, it's in my, it's in my report, that I'm recommending, my recommendation is adding to 2.6, which is the asset protection, another section that says, allow the naming of any program or facility, the superintendent shall not allow the naming of any program or facility without a procedure in place that includes verification that the named person's actions or perceived values will not detract from the mission and vision of your board's identified management policy. Is there a motion? The superintendent shall not postpone the executive limitation warnings, so you can't, in other words, the superintendent shall not allow something that violates the statute. So unless you're changing the entire structure, which I would be...
I was checking, you, you, sorry, I was...
Yeah, exactly, no.
I think there's a logical issue with it.
Before we go there, I need a motion, please. Okay, there's a second.
Second.
Was it a motion to accept what Jeanne wrote?
Yes. To add it to the policy, 2.6.
And it would have to go through two meetings.
Right, it would have to go again, we'd have to do it again, and we wouldn't be able to do that again until our retreat. So we would do it now, and we always have to wait 30 days, so that we're close to retreat. Kevin?
I have two suggestions, I think it's a good idea, the linguistic one is that we're trying to verify, or the superintendent being the decision verifying negative, that the person's actions, perceived values, will not detract from the mission. I think it probably should be written positively that the person's actions or values of career or whatever reflect the mission and vision of your board's identified management policy. And, and then the other suggestion I would make is that, I think this is, this is something that the board would probably be better at than the superintendent, that the board knows the community, you know, has lived with people who have devoted 30... the community, you know, has lived with people who have devoted 30 years to the school or whatever, knows who's respected and beloved. So adding a sentence about, you know, the board approving or naming such a person's , like my community, a good idea as well.
I'd say the superintendent is...
Yeah.
So having it specifically directed at the end's policy, I think makes a lot of sense. But in reading our end's policy, you could theoretically mean it after, so unfamous white sentences, there's nothing stopping that in the end's policy. So I feel like our end's policy is either missing something or, well, and having it just linked to the end's policy doesn't make sense. So like if you go to citizenship, it says in order to participate and contribute in an informed manner in the community, you could, in a very informed way, exclude a whole bunch of people from speak to that mission.
Other questions? Maybe, maybe. Are you requesting a funding? He says he wants it to be positive, and what was the other part? I'm sorry.
Include the board. So it could say that allow the naming of any program or facility without a procedure in place that includes verification of the named person's actions or perceived values reflective of the mission and vision of the board with a recommendation to the board that does not address Jeremy's point about end's policy. You could say that reflects an inclusive mission and vision, perhaps, I'm not sure.
Jeremy, you have a suggestion?
Changing the end's policy?
Yeah, I think changing the end's policy, or that, yeah, not changing, but adding to the end's policy would be the suggestion, and then this could stand as it is. It seems like in a broader picture, that probably makes more sense because that triffs down everything in the governance. So end's policy has the four categories. There's disposition of lifelong learners, that I think doesn't apply to, let's say, academic deficiency, which would normally apply to academics. So social, emotional, and personal development, boy, potentially apply. It says students use self-awareness and interpersonal skills to effectively enhance their own performance and collaborate with others. That doesn't cover that.
Does the interim say something?
Tell me I can...
No, it doesn't. So, for example, the... A sentence at the very front, yeah, meaning without adding a section.
If, I mean, this end's policy, basically everything focuses on the student in relation to themselves, not really the student's in relation to the surrounding world.
You could say something like models policy, you could change citizenship to good citizenship, and someone who models policy 1.4, I mean, global end 1.4, anticipate and inform them around their community, understand the impact of history, government, law, and economy on self and society, and, you know, add a phrase that, in a way that helps improve society or something like that.
One of the things I want to say is that we had talked about in our retreat modifying the ends so that they were more quantit...
Quantifiable.
Quantifiable, there, thank you for that word. And so therefore, I'm not sure that this argument works well with that, only because, I like your suggestion, Gene, but it may be that we're putting the cart before the horse. So maybe we need to change our end's policy first, which we were...
Around citizenship.
Right. Well, around everything, actually. And then, then bring this back to talk about adding to 2.6. Jen?
I have a curiosity that maybe we could add to our retreat and of making certain that we are aligning with some of the social, emotional assessment tools that we have in place, like Panorano and those things, so that when we are talking about measurable, we have data to support.
That's exactly what we, right, that's exactly what we want to do. So that's one of the things we want to ask Kristen to do, and that's what we want to talk about in our retreat, is making these quantifiables so that when we talk about ends or when we have, that we have information to tell us whether or not we're actually able to do our ends, or our ends are happening.
I can prepare for you if you want, that meaning of revise positively worded, as you said, leaving the ends kind of in parentheses for when you revisit the actual end's policy. We reflect that, all as for you to discuss at the, at the retreat.
Jeremy, do you have a question?
Yeah, just had a question about the timeframe of this, the need of this policy. We're going to need that before the retreat? Like, do we have to have something tonight in place until the retreat?
I already identified that we can't really take that move until I've got something in place, and there's eight days left of school.
So the question is, we have to ask the person who made the motion, and the second motion if they're willing to take back the motion and table this until we're able to do some end's reconfiguration.
Did I make the motion?
My second, I'll take it back.
Okay. All right. So then that's what we'll do.
There was a bell up there to your... Oh. Maybe she can do it on the superintendent's report.
Oh, Brenda. Bill and Brenda. All right. Well, we'll get to that when we get to your superintendent's report. RNESU Board of Presentations.
Do you remember what we did?
RNESU Board. So that's Becky, Barbara, and myself.
I remember that one last time. We haven't met since then.
That's correct, you haven't.
Okay.
It was right before last meeting.
All right. Well, let me know. Well, that's fine. Okay. Board, Board Annual Self-Evaluations, individual and whole board. Melinda sent out to everybody an email. Those need to be done by July 1st because we need to have those in time for our retreat. For you new board members, I realize that you've only been here for like three meetings, maybe by the time you fill that out. Just do it to the best of your ability. I did talk to that with Melinda, but you just have to do the best you can with it. And we understand that there are one, four brand new board members, we didn't start till May. So. We also need to review our board annual work plan. We have one more meeting left of this school year, which is July 15th, which we've just added some stuff to. Do you want to have that right there?
Yeah. So on June 15th, you're having the middle school facilities discussion and whether or not the Calverly land, for lack of another word, could be used for middle school or not. That was a feasibility study that you had asked to have done. So you'll have that presentation. And it says facilities discussion again?
Well, we're, well, we've already decided we're doing that.
Yeah, but that was already on there, so that's odd. And so now you'll do your, also your board monitoring reports. You moved everything to June 15th.
Oh, right. Those board monitoring reports, yes.
And the year-end financial review along with Devon and Josh during the presentation.
Yep.
It'll be a lot.
Got a way to go out, Gene. All right. So superintendent's informational report.
And I welcome Brenda back. Thanks, nice try. I know that there's been action around the bell, and Bill had arranged for some people to come to the school on Monday, and you sent Steve there, and I wonder if you could give an update on that, either of you?
We saw where we went. Basically, we're looking at specifications around various components, and Steve's going to put this together into a memo, put his recommendations in, as well as, I think, make an estimate on costs. So we're just waiting for your court of Steve.
Anything to add, Brenda?
Nope. No, not really.
Is there any chance that, I think we have parents from four sixth graders in here right now, have any chance that their kids are going to get to ring the bell this year?
The bell was had a three.
No, it hasn't.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I clap her husband, too.
It was a free...
Monday?
Monday.
Steve told me today that the bell rings.
Well, it's not as you hook up the cord, it does.
Okay. Right, right. The, all the others do is ring the cord down, yes.
I did not ask the principal, which is a reason why this...
It could be arranged, as simple as that to vote to that, if you want.
Yeah.
Anything else you'd like to report on?
Thank you, Brenda. That was it. Thanks.
I leave for now, for real?
Yeah. Yeah, thank you.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Very good.
I gave you the PCV testing schedule. Brett, was it you or Jeremy who brought that up last night? What have you done? So we're not, we're not imminent. And then I sent you an email today about the change of the Otter Valley schedule for next week, and I hope you have any questions, but other than that, no.
Yes, Brenda. You can do this later, or you can do it now. But can you just, you just explain next week's schedule for me, please?
Yeah, certainly, I'd be happy to. So, again, we've had extreme shortages of staff, and looking ahead a week, we're going to continue having extreme shortages at high school. And so we are reverting back to the October 2020 schedule, where according to the alphabet, students will be split into blue groups or white groups, the blue and white of Otter Valley. And don't hold me to which group is which one, because I don't remember.
Blue was the first half.
Thank you. So, blue is the first half of the alphabet, and they will attend school on Monday and Wednesday of next week for the high school, and Friday if they're in middle school. High school blue group only attends Friday if they have called back to do at the end of the semester. The white group then will attend school on Tuesday and Thursday for high school. Middle school also will come Monday the 13th. High school Monday the 13th will only be if they have called back. The high school will not have school on the 14th. This allows us to work with a smaller group, and when you're not in school, you'll be getting assignments through Google Classroom, so there's still learning that's going on, similar to back at the beginning of COVID. There will not be hybrid learning, there will not be computers into the classroom. You're either in school or you're working at home on the, on the school assignments. That's, that's just for the last week of school. What it allows us to do with our extreme staffing shortage is if we're still unable to fill a class, it's a lot easier to combine classes of seven or eight than the combined classes of 15 to create 30-plus kids, which is what we have been doing. So if you, if we cannot cover a class and we're combining classes in the library, we could have 30 or 40 kids in the library with one, one staff person, which is not beneficial to anybody. So we want to finish the year smoothly and safely. Does that help?
Yeah, thank you.
Better than what we wrote?
Yes. Anything else for Brenda, or for Gene, sorry?
Just a question on that. Is there a plan for lunches and stuff?
Yes, thank you for asking that. Yes. So what we do is Abby Services prepares bag lunches, so if you're a Monday student, you can take home a lunch for Tuesday, breakfast lunch, it's usually a combined two-mile bag lunch, and if you're, you know, vice versa.
I'm sorry, but I hear you earlier, you spoke about this, and you're getting together with the principals and working on a strategy for next year.
Absolutely.
Whether this, this may not happen next year, but it does sound like a shortage, staff shortage.
Well, what I'm working on with the principals for next year is around the behavioral response system in high school. And I can't guarantee that I'm going to have staffing. I will say that we're hiring for next year, and our hiring is going very well, we're ahead of the gate, where we're hurting, I mean, this year, every time Kristen hired an interventionist, I put him into a classroom. And it was, you know, we had vacancies we couldn't fill. I'm concerned still about several. And I'm concerned, you know, after last week's tragedy in Texas, how many people want to step up and be a teacher. But right now, we are filling vacancies. And the high school needs to do some work around a behavioral support system that's most...
When you reference spaces with 30-plus students and one staff, that, that can be put in that area, I would say, working conditions? Have you had any grievous things with staff, right?
Not about that. Staff has been wonderful, and we try not to have 30 with one staff, honestly. But still, 30 students in this room, even with two staff, is not productive. By the way, I attended Springfield today, and it was, at high school, kids were great.
This is probably not a discussion we want to get into, but, I mean, are we, are we experiencing a bigger issue with staffing than other districts, or?
No.
I would imagine probably not, but...
Not a bigger issue, the same issue. And in some ways, we're ahead of others because we are able to fill next year's openings. We have very few openings left, we do have a couple because we have some late resignations that came in. So as far as the anticipated staffing, we're on, we're on track right now. What, and this year we weren't. So for example, at Lester this year, I had one sixth grade classroom that went through four teachers. I don't expect that to happen next year.
Good question.
Yeah. It is a good place, we're in a good place in early June. However, staffing is becoming a major crisis. We have been unable to fully staff bus drivers all year. We have been, we have been unable to fully staff substitutes all year, even though we went to, I allowed principals to hire what I call floating subs, which means somebody that will show up to the school every single day, and they know they have a job, they don't have to wait for that 6:00 AM phone call, and they can be assigned to that school. We couldn't even fill those positions, and we give decent benefits. We have been unable to fill all of our custodial positions. And my concern is there are a couple of key teaching positions that I'm concerned about, guidance counseling, foreign languages, math. In the past, we have been unable to fill math positions in the high school. Right now, we don't have an opening for the math department, but should we have one, it'd be very difficult to fill. And what we have done then is, is we've taken the other teachers in the math department, asked them each to take this section, and we pay them extra for that, so they plan after school, but that burns out your teachers in the long run, too.
Just want to say that his name, the teacher at, sorry, the principal at the academy.
Mr. Flory.
Mr. Flory, thank you. And Mr. Avery, Mr. Avery I know about, they're not having an easy glide to retirement. It's been, it's been really rough, juggling a whole lot of responsibilities, working as subs, it's, it's exhausting, and just want to express my appreciation to them one more.
So, it is now 7:59, and our next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, June 15th, here at the Otter Valley Library at 6:00. And then again, we will not meet again until August. So if you're all willing to adjourn by consensus, do so.